But it's funny, because you've been doing this trip for like five years. Wasn't a lot easier now. You know, I was laying in bed like I was starting to get tired of my hybrid. Yeah, it creeps itself on me.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're gonna get started in just a moment. Thank you, everyone. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. And I'd ask our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a healthy group in attendance tonight. Thank you to everyone for coming. We recognize a quorum of our board with five members present. Nancy Justman is en route, and she'll be joining us shortly. Donnie Schmidt is out of the country and has an excused absence, so we'll see your next meeting. With that, in front of us is our agenda, and it's time to approve the agenda. The agenda was posted in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Would there be a second?
One second.
John, we'll give that one to you. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We come to the public participation portion of our agenda. I have a number of comment cards. In fact, let's see, I've put numbers on them. I have sixteen. So I'm gonna pause first of all to see if there's anyone else who wish to turn in a comment card. Right? Thank you very much. Seventeen, thank you. All right. So with seventeen individuals and three minutes per, Board Policy 187 provides for a thirty-minute time slot, so we could exceed that. It's been the custom of this board to extend to allow the individuals here to present. And so to that end, I would move to amend Policy 187 for this evening to allow all seventeen speakers to speak up to their three minutes. Thank you, Joel. Motion and second to amend Policy 187 to allow all seventeen speakers. Any additional or final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So with no further ado, I will read the preamble, the public, to Board Policy 187 for public participation, and then we will get started. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes a nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consider, into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as a guarantee of fair and timely response. So what I'll do now is I will invite participants forward to speak. There's a visible timer right behind me to help you gauge your, gauge your time. And so given a number of participants, what I'll do is I'll state who's first and then who's on deck so that you can, so you can prepare. So I'd like to invite to the podium Stacy Beltman, and next will be Daniel Schumacher. Ms. Beltman, welcome. I see you've indicated you're a resident, a parent guardian. You have students enrolled in the district and are an employee. Fantastic. The next three minutes are yours.
My name is Stacy Beltman. I am an employee, a parent, a resident. Thank you so much. Hello, my name is Stacy Beltman. I am an employee, a parent, a resident, and taxpayer in the district. I have taught here for sixteen years. All of my years have been at Fair Park. Tonight, I am speaking as a member of the WBEA Executive Board. As a first-grade teacher, I have made it a habit of singing most of my directions. I have a great tune that almost guarantees each student will get their name on their work. My directions this evening will be less musical and more direct. I'm here today to say that district teachers deserve a cost-of-living adjustment. For too many years in a row, teachers have lost buying power to inflation. A cost-of-living adjustment will at long last communicate that the work employees do on behalf of this community, students, and families is important and valued. Anything less means yet another year of falling behind, and that is an insult to those who will step into classrooms tomorrow morning to do the difficult, complicated, and highly skilled work of school instruction. The work done over the past years has not been honored, and we ask that the work going forward is recognized with an appropriate pay in the form of a cost-of-living adjustment. By doing so, whenever we read the words "thank you for all you do" on District Communications, we will have reason to believe it. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you for your comments. Thanks. Yeah. Thank you for that. My apologies. I think I had mentioned in here, or forgot to mention, that to ensure the participants are heard and that this meeting is conducted fairly, we'd ask folks to refrain from comments or from applause. And so I apologize for missing that portion of 187. It was right at the bottom here and escaped my glasses, so, but thank you. Daniel Schumacher is at the podium, and I'll invite next Mark Drake. So Ms. Schumacher, you indicated resident and employee?
Indeed.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
All right. My name is Dani Schumacher, and this is my eighth year as an English teacher at West Bend West High School, and I'm a resident of West Bend. As I prepared to speak today, I had some large goals in mind. I planned to count up all my working hours, the planning, grading, meetings, reading, paperwork, feedback, bus trips, weekend and week-long trips. Then I stopped, because this isn't about the hours. I think the majority of people already know that teaching requires countless hours of work and time, and those of us who went into teaching knew this. We also knew we would not become millionaires. However, those of us who committed ourselves to this profession never dreamed that our career choice would require the sacrifice of financial stability. West Bend needs to pay teachers a cost-of-living increase if the goal is to attract and retain quality educators, because the reality is that teachers are leaving for other districts who pay more for experience or leave the profession altogether. I can't dream of doing anything else for a living, but that reality for me has also come with the fact that I will need to sacrifice another dream, my dream of becoming a mom. My husband and I believe that bringing a child into our world would be financially irresponsible. In a world of numbers, I hope this personal detail speaks volumes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third speaker tonight is Mr. Mark Drake, followed by Kayla Koenig. And Mr. Drake, it indicates you are an employee of the district, correct?
Correct.
Right. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. My name is Mark Drake, and I've been a high school teacher, coach, and club advisor in the district for eighteen years, and I'm hard to buy presents for. And my wife says it's because I'm ungrateful. Actually, what it is is just a communication issue. If people just wanted to get to know me and know what I do and what I am, then it wouldn't be a problem at all. There are simple answers, but she compares me to the Office episode when Michael gets mad during Secret Santa because he doesn't feel valued. So let me be clear, that I'm very grateful for so much about my job and my profession, but I don't want to be appreciated less than the bare minimum, and to me, that's a homemade oven mitts worth. Last year, between the birth of my son and the end of pandemic, I hosted seventeen after-school review sessions for my AP students, ranging from thirty minutes to two hours. When my wife asks why I continue to stay so late, I tell her that, like the story about the starfish on the beach, it matters to that one. Maybe it's really because since we've moved to a data-driven, continuous improvement culture, it doesn't matter that my students regularly beat the state and national average pass rates. I'm now drilled to have a voice in my head that keeps saying, "Well, why weren't your pass rates higher?" You know, some of my students recently were upset about the Taylor Swift Ticketmaster debacle, so I think to myself, "I can stay here later and write an FRQ about it and get them to see the real-world applications of their interests and our course content merge and help their pass rates." I can watch my son play with his Thomas the Tank Engine later. They're gonna get that FRQ in a couple of weeks, but I miss time with my family. This last Saturday, our mock trial team hosted our scrimmage at the courthouse. And let me tell you, working with elected officials is a breeze compared to the logistics of weekend childcare. My wife works every other weekend, so in order to do this, my immediate and extended family had to jump through massive hoops so that my high school students could benefit. In my entire profession, my contracted co-curricular pay has never increased. Most years, teacher contracts that I've had have lost money to the rate of inflation, or other years we get a cost-of-living increase, but it was cut by health insurance cost increases. The point is, it feels like the harder I work, the more I actually lose, both personally and financially. My young son is weeks away from walking on his own. Weekend conversations with my four-year-old daughter have ranged from "why Maui was mean to Moana" to "will mama's car be lonely at the auto shop or not?" I can't miss more of those events. So who loses out if I cut back on a review session or two, or run one less co-curricular, or write one less FRQ? Not my family. And what if a bunch of my overworked peers feel the exact same way? Get together, have a dialogue. Kids need teachers. Teachers need time and fair compensation. These are simple answers, and please don't make us feel like homemade oven mitts. Thank you.
Thank you. Invite Kayla Koenig to the podium, and next on deck will be Joe Detman. And Ms. Koenig, it says that you are an employee of the district. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Hello, my name is Kayla Koenig. I am a sixth-grade special education teacher at Silverbrook, and I am here today speaking in my role as a member of the WBEA Executive Board. For years, the district has said their goal is to attract and retain quality teachers, which is becoming even more necessary as the climate of education continues to change with fewer and fewer people going into teacher preparation programs at the same time as there is a national exodus from the profession due to a multitude of factors, with a major one being compensation. In order to attract teachers, the district has established a competitive novice teacher scale for teachers in the first five years of their career. This scale ends with a year-five teacher being compensated forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. I stand before you today in my eleventh year of my career with a salary of just fifty thousand three hundred fifty dollars. That is a difference of just one thousand five hundred fifty dollars for my six additional years of experience. Broken down, each of those years of experience is currently worth only an additional two hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents to the district. It seems to me that it isn't a coincidence that fifty-five percent of teachers that left the district from March of 2022 to September of 2022 had less than five years of service in the West Bend School District. West Bend has become a district to begin your career in to gain experience, but then leave for an employer that respects your experience and compensates it accordingly. I am here today to urge the board to find a way to compensate teachers in a matter that honors their experience and truly aims at the goal of retaining the quality educators we have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Invite forward Joe Detman to the podium, and on deck is Haley Doherty. Mr. Detman, it says that you are a resident, parent, and an employee of the district, correct?
Former.
Former. All right, very good. The next three minutes are yours.
All right, thank you. Hello, I am speaking today on the topic of raises for district staff. I am speaking as a former West Bend district educator of seven years, the spouse of a current district educator, and as the parent of two young girls who will soon start their journey in this district. It's a time-honored truth that there are a handful of professions that are tasked with the hardest tasks and salaries which couldn't possibly match the wear and tear of the role. Teaching is one of them. I don't personally know any teacher who has gone into the profession seeking wealth and popularity, so I'm not current, sorry, I'm not under any impression that I'll ever see them paid what I think that they're actually worth, but I do believe it's possible to at least show them that their hard work is valued and that we care to incentivize their commitment to the district long-term. Doing the math with inflation and the cost of living in consideration, in seven years of teaching in the district, I never truly received a raise that put me in a better standing with the financial responsibilities that my family has. On top of that, having my spouse in the same boat meant that we couldn't ever really visualize a world in which we'd be free of those different daily stressors. We've always been very responsible. We've paid our bills on time. We've been able to save enough money to mitigate any of life's unexpected disasters. And, you know, with all of that, when anyone is dedicated to a profession and does it well, to me, at some point, they should be able to move past making it work and achieve some kind of financial freedom. So a year and a half ago, I made the difficult decision of leaving my chosen profession of teaching in pursuit of a role and a company that changed all of that for me, Delta Defense. Here, I'm in the Learning and Development Department, a role which allows me to use my education degree but with far less stress and with a compensation that matches my responsibilities. Even better, it has a clear structure for annual raises. As a base, I can typically expect a cost-of-living increase each year, but I also have the ability to increase that percentage with a recommendation from my boss following an annual review. So this year, like all, I worked hard, and I made sure my job was done right, something that I've done in every single role I've ever had. But unlike the roles that I've had in the past at Delta, for me, this year, that meant that I was rewarded with even more on top of that base increase. So in the short span of time since leaving public education, I'm now going to be making around a hundred and seventy percent of what I was making when I left the district. So I'm not the only one. There are currently three other educators on my team who came from public education. I've seen too many good teachers leave this district in pursuit of something with less stress and fair pay. If that hemorrhage continues unchecked, then we're gonna lose the most valuable resource that we have for our most important customer, the students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we invite Haley Doherty to the, to the podium, and next will be Shelley Krieger. Okay, Ms. Doherty, you've indicated you're a resident and an employee of the district. Is that correct? Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Haley Doherty. I'm a teacher at West Bend East and a resident of West Bend. I'm here tonight to share some insights into why teachers in our district need a cost-of-living increase. Simply put, the district can't afford to continue to underpay its teachers. If you want the experienced teachers who make this district great to stay and continue making great things happen for students, then our salaries need keep up, need to keep up with the cost of living. I never picked my profession based on money. I was that little girl who knew from the youngest possible age I wanted to be a teacher. In college and now beyond, I said I wanted to teach freshman English. Do you know how many odd looks that has gotten me? I greatly enjoy what I get to do each and every day. However, as my seventh year of teaching in West Bend continues, I'm caught wondering if I will be able to afford to keep my dream and passion a reality. As prices for health insurance, gas to heat my home, and groceries climb, I don't see salaries for teachers doing the same. I realize that unlike jobs that make money for others, teaching is a job that, teaching is a job of public service. It costs money to teach students, but it shouldn't be my own money that it costs. I knew when I chose teaching, there'd be many thankless aspects of the job. I knew that I would have to hold my bladder, never be able to take an off-season vacation, and sacrifice personal time for the many students I see every day. I didn't become a teacher to get rich, but I would like to be able to afford to keep up with the price of groceries. Seven years ago, West Bend High Schools became my school. My husband and I have made West Bend our home. I want to spend the next twenty-some years contributing to, sorry, continuing to educate the children of West Bend. But if I continue to lose money by not getting a cost-of-living increase as the prices for everything else increase, that dream becomes impossible to achieve. This dilemma is not unique to me. It's a dilemma and question my colleagues' district-wide face every day. How long can I afford to stay in teaching? I became a teacher because students, their learning, and the future of society were important to me. They still are, but I'm important too. My ability to pay for the basic necessities of food, shelter, and clothing are important. West Bend teachers can't keep taking the hit. Instead of more software, instead of more software or programs, how about we ensure teachers feel valued and compensated for the professional, hard-working people they are? Thank you.
Thank you. We invite Shelley Krieger to the podium, and Jody Laidoff is on deck. And Ms. Krieger, it says you are a resident and an employee of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
My name is Shelley Krieger, and I am in my thirty-second year of teaching at West High School. I'm close to the end of my teaching career. Maybe closer than some of you think. But I worry about my colleagues who have worked many years with capped salaries and no cost-of-living increases. They are burned out and questioning their choice to stay in, in teaching with a district that doesn't seem to value them. I'm here tonight to ask the board to show that they do, in fact, value their teachers as much as districts like Slinger, Fond du Lac, Oshkosh, and Appleton by approving a cost-of-living adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you. We invite Jody Laidoff to the podium, and Jenny Orth will be on deck. Good evening. It says you are an employee of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, I am. A nice pronunciation on my name.
Was it? I wasn't sure.
Turn the lights off, is what I tell the students. Light off, yes.
I'll remember that. The next three minutes are yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Silverbrook, and I'm here speaking as my role as a member of the WBEA Exec Board. First, I want to say thank you for your time spent as a board member. It's just not the two meetings a month. It's more than that, and I see that. As someone who grew up here, raised my kids here, continues to help my aging parents here and works here, I love this community and know you wouldn't be here if you didn't as well. Also, I appreciate this opportunity to speak. I'd like to ask you how old you were twenty years ago, rhetorically speaking, 2002. I was thirty-three, a mother, an educator in the WB schools for ten years. I had just completed my master's degree and was excited for that move on the pay scale. Unfortunately, it did not come. My salary became frozen twenty years ago. They said, "Hold tight. Good times are coming. We just need to hang on." Well, I can do that. I love my job, my community, and my students. I hung on. That was twenty years ago. Those of us who have been here twenty-plus years have had our salary frozen more than not, twenty years. Please, I urge you to find a way to compensate teachers, not just for our community today, but our future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We invite Jenny Orth to the podium, and Allison Guzan is on deck. Ms. Orth, it says you're a resident, a parent, you have students enrolled in the district, and an employee. Is that correct?
All the above. Check them all.
Excellent.
All right. Hi, guys. My name is Jenny Orth, and I'm a fourth-grade teacher at McLean Elementary. I've been a teacher in the West Bend School District for the past twenty-eight years, serving in many additional capacities as well, including high school forensics coach, homebound tutor, and I'm currently the internal PBIS coach at my site. I am a product of West Bend East High School and have made West Bend my home for the past forty-five years. My husband and I have dedicated our entire professional careers to the children and families of West Bend, and we are proud to say that our own four children are products of the system as well. At the time of my college graduation twenty-eight years ago, I applied and was offered many positions in the surrounding communities as well as West Bend. After much contemplation, I decided to accept the offer in West Bend for a number of reasons. Not only was this a school district that I was proud of, but at that time, West Bend was a very competitive market. West Bend had a respectable benefits package, a pay scale that could support a family, and compensation that matched the cost-of-living increases. Twenty-eight years later, I find myself in a situation where I can no longer tout those claims. I am losing to the cost-of-living increase for the tenth year in a row. While my pay froze, cost of living and daily expenses did not. Our insurance premiums have risen for the past five years, currently costing me an additional two thousand one hundred six dollars per year. Other costs just from the school district alone include additional fees for athletics, hot lunch, instructional materials, parking passes, extracurricular clubs, electronic fees. Having four children, do the math, that's quite expensive. This has risen as well. It's estimated that four thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars is the amount of compensation lost to inflation last year alone. Outside of the district increases, we see rising prices with groceries, utilities, and travel, but a salary adjustment that does not match that. On a daily basis, we teach our kids how to follow the WBSD way. Posters are displayed in the hallways, classrooms, on buses, and in the community. As teachers, we model and exemplify being ready, being safe, being respectful, and being responsible. I'm standing before you today, imploring you to follow the same I'm standing before you today, imploring you to follow the same motto that we expect of our children. Please, please, be responsible leaders of the West Bend School District and do the respectable task of compensating your educators for the quality jobs they perform on a daily basis. And at a minimum, match the cost-of-living increase so that we can retain the outstanding staff and continue to be proud of this district and community that we've made our home. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome Allison Guzan to the podium, and Kirsten Syrah will be on deck. And Ms. Guzan, it indicates here that you are a resident and an employee of the district. Is that correct?
I am, yes.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Hello. My name is Allison Guzan, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Fair Park Elementary. I've been working in the West Bend School District for six years now. When I was first hired in August 2017, I was thrilled to be working in a district that valued its teachers. Over the past six years, I have felt a mix of emotions. One of the biggest disappointments came when teachers were accused of doing nothing when they were sent home because of a close contact with a sick student during the 2020-2021 school year. Despite the challenges, I go into our classroom each day knowing that I am going to meet each of my kids' needs. They are going to be fed, warm, safe, and loved. I value them. I respect them. I, however, do not feel that respect and value as a teacher, and it has affected my family every day. We live on a tight budget and watch for any sale on grocery items, especially now that prices have skyrocketed. I have applied for energy assistance through We Energy for multiple years in a row because I need to keep my family warm. My husband stays home with our one-year-old because we cannot afford childcare. Therefore, he must work nights and weekends instead of being home with us. I walk to work because we are a one-car family to save on car insurance, gas, and maintenance. In addition, I teach summer school because I cannot afford to take the summers off. Every day, I am constantly thinking, how am I going to provide for my family? We all want our needs met. We all want to be valued. We all want the best for our students and our West Bend School District. Please consider how compensating your educators would help our needs be met. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome Kirsten Syrah to the podium, who's going to tell me how well I did or poorly I did with her name, and Mr. Jason Pennerman will be on deck.
Yeah, we pronounce them all strangely. I apologize. It's Syrah?
Syrah.
Kirsten Syrah.
No, it's all right. Thank you. My apologies for the mispronunciation.
That's okay. Thank you.
Indicates that you are an employee of the district. Is that correct?
That is true.
Great. The next three minutes are yours. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kirsten Syrah, and I am a teacher in the West Bend School District and have been a teacher in Wisconsin Public Schools since 1991. I'm here in my role as a member of the executive board of the WBA and to speak on behalf of the teachers in the district. We deserve a fair and reasonable increase to our pay that is in line with the cost of living increase in the United States. Public education is near crisis mode. We are facing unreasonable cuts to our funding from a state level as well as a mass exodus of our best and brightest educators. The Wall Street Journal reports that at least 300,000 public school teachers and other staff left the profession between February 2020 and May 2022. For far too long, our public education system has been balancing the books on the backs of teachers. We spend countless uncompensated hours in our classrooms and for our classrooms. According to an article in the NEA Today, "More than 90% of teachers spend their own money on school supplies and other items their students need to succeed." I, like many of my colleagues, have spent significant amounts of my own money on my classroom. Under-resourced schools and the unstated expectation that educators will spend their own money on supplies and equipment are factors that drive educators away from the profession. Would you ever have to buy a pencil for working in your office? I've had to. According to a report published by CNBC, average pay increases throughout the United States in 2022 were more than 4% for 2/3 of survey participants. More than 25% of those surveyed received compensation increases closer to 5%, and many companies made mid-year adjustments to pay with the increase of inflation in June. We are asking for fair compensation in line with our expertise in education that allows all teachers to continue to be contributing members of the community, that allows teachers to have the buying power of the educated professionals that we are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. We move to Mr. Jason Pennerman, and on deck will be Jody Bellerian. Mr. Pennerman, it says you are a resident, a parent with students enrolled in the district, and an employee. Is that correct?
Yes, all three.
All right. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for allowing me to speak and the other teachers. My name is Jason Pennerman. I've been a resident since 2001, an employee since 2001. My wife is a teacher here. I'm a teacher, and I have a child in the district. I'm reading a letter that was created by Robert C. Weddick, a seventh-grade social studies teacher at Badger Middle School. This was also sent to the school board. "To the members of the WBSD School Board, thank you for your service and stepping up to help your community. In August, I celebrated 25 years in the district. I was born in West Bend, went to school here, and I'm proud to get to do the work I do. I know that the WBSD School Board has always taken their responsibility to the taxpayers of West Bend very seriously. However, at some point, frugality does a disservice to the teachers who are entrusted with growing the next generation of learners. If I was a prospective hire and looking at the current maximum I could earn on the salary schedule, I would seek a job elsewhere. When I married my wife, a school social worker in Watertown, in 2011, our salaries were similar and would remain so for a few years. The maximum in Watertown is now $88,000 per year. Personally, my gross pay has gone up about 5% since 2013. That's approximately $400 a year. Whatever index you use, be it a consumer price index, cost of living, et cetera, I've been losing ground every year. With the economic woes of the past year or two, other districts in southeast Wisconsin have given their teachers raises ranging up to 4.7%, the maximum allowed by state law, and almost as much as I've gained over the past decade. I'm sure this will be a difficult decision for the board, and I hope you consider my perspective as you make it. Thank you. Robert Weddick, seventh-grade social studies teacher, Badger Middle School. Thank you."
Thank you. Welcome Jody Bellerian to the podium, and Gerald Sorsy will be on deck. And Ms. Bellerian, it says that you are an employee of the district. Is that correct?
I am.
And did I get your name correct?
It was great.
All right. Thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. I'm Jody Bellerian, and I'm a second-grade teacher at McLean Elementary. I have been a teacher in this district for the past 30 years. Many people have asked if I'm ready to retire. My answer is always no. I love what I do, I love who I work with, and most of all, I love the kids I teach. What I haven't always loved, though, is how I have been compensated. The history of compensation has been inconsistent and one-sided. West Bend has been notorious in giving more of a raise to those with less experience and giving less to the more seasoned professionals. It projects the feeling that West Bend does not value those who have committed their lives to this district. When salary adjustments have occurred, it has typically been after wages have been frozen. The pattern has appeared to be wages frozen for two years and then a raise given. The increase seemed to be sufficient until you take a closer look. My salary was frozen for four years, from 2014 to 2018, and then suddenly, a $1,600 raise was granted for the 2018-19 school year. This wage increase appeared generous. However, when dividing this out, over the four years it was frozen and the one year of the pay increase, my raise resulted in a $318 a year, or $12 a check before taxes. But to really put West Bend's compensation all into perspective, for the last nine years, my salary compensation has totaled $3,718. That averages $413 a year, or $15 a check before taxes. This is well below the cost of living. Due to this situation, I have worked a second job for the past 10 years. Furthermore, my husband has come out of retirement, is now subbing at McLean. Unfortunately, your limited compensation has also greatly affected my future WRS income. So when you are considering the amount of money to compensate the hard-working teachers who have dedicated their lives to teaching the children in the West Bend School District for so many years, please reflect back on my words and know that I am not alone in this situation. And ask yourself if you could live on $15 increase per check year after year. Thank you for your understanding and time.
Thank you. We welcome Mr. Gerald Sorsy to the podium, and Mr. Jack Chamberlain will be next.
See if it goes high enough. You said it right, though. Good. My name is Gerald Sorsy. I'm here to speak to you as a high school teacher in the district that is concerned about teacher compensation. I've been with the district now for eight years, and in this time, I've seen small increases to my base salary. In comparison to inflation and drastic increases in our contributions to our healthcare plans, this has made me have to take on other work just to pay for daily essentials. As a tech ed teacher, I work closely with our partnering businesses, and as you may know, they're in dire need of quality, educated, and hard-working people. If the West Bend School District does not have a quality compensation plan in place soon, I firmly believe that we will be, sorry, I firmly believe that there will be a large number of teachers exiting our school district to move to higher-paying private industries. Some people say that teachers should understand that going into this profession, they will never be financially wealthy. This is something we understand, but we should be able to earn an honest living that can raise a family and live comfortably within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome Jack Chamberlain to the podium, and Ms. Tanya Lore is on deck. Mr. Chamberlain, it says you are a resident, parent with students enrolled in the district, and an employee. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. My name is Jack Chamberlain. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight and for the continuing negotiations with the WBA. Forgive me for characterizing or perhaps mischaracterizing the ebbs and flows of history. Thinking about time on a long scale is an occupational hazard. 19th-century American settlement was certainly full of complexity, one being the wide range of people who founded schools and became teachers stemming from a sense of calling. 20th-century teaching still claimed aspects of that calling, but there was a simultaneous shift towards the promise of better training and better compensating professional educators. I believe that in this new century, we have abandoned some of that promise, and this national trend, of course, affects us locally. For nearly 20 years, my wife and I have called West Bend home. We've raised our girls here and gone about the work of supporting our community. A cost-of-living adjustment is a bare minimum for recognizing the community-building efforts of West Bend's public school teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tanya Lore is next, and Leah Duckert will be our last speaker tonight. Ms. Lore, it says you're an employee of the district. That's correct?
That is correct.
All right. The next three minutes are yours.
My name is Tanya Lore, and I am a teacher and parent in the West Bend School District. I'm speaking tonight as the president of the West Bend Education Association. First, I'd like to recognize and thank all of the amazing teachers who took time out of their busy schedules to be here tonight. Your presence speaks volumes to the importance of the issues and concerns raised tonight and the level of dedication you have to our profession. Thank you for continuing to be professional problem solvers on top of everything else you do. Thank you also to the board and to our district administration, who have kept lines of communication open even when we've disagreed. I truly believe that together, we can come up with a solution that serves all. Teachers, more than anyone, understand the current underfunding of our public schools. We know what revenue caps do to district funding. We know how much vouchers cost our schools. We know the district administration is afraid of what funding might look like in a couple of years. We even understand the what-if game that the administration must play when looking at the future of our district. What we don't understand is why. Of all of the scary what-ifs put forward by the district, the scariest what-ifs never seem to be placed front and center. What if a quarter of our staff leaves between now and next September? What if we lose all of that expertise and experience? And what if we can't find enough qualified teachers to fill all of our openings? In the past, these questions weren't asked because it was just taken for granted that the vast majority of teachers would stay, no matter what. But we can't take teachers for granted anymore. Our limit has been reached. You heard tonight that our teachers want to teach here. They are proud to teach in the West Bend School District, but they have reached a point where they have to question whether they can afford to stay. I urge you to find a way to make the answer to this question yes. Yes, I can afford to stay and teach in the West Bend School District. Times are tough for our districts and our schools. Times will be even tougher without qualified teachers in our classrooms. Let's work together to figure out how to keep our amazing educators teaching in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Leah Duckert. Hello, and it says here you are a resident of the district and an employee of the district.
All true.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Thanks. My name is Leah Duckert-Kroll, and I am speaking as a member of the WBA leadership team, but I'm actually reading on behalf of Nikki Williams, who is also a member of the WBA leadership team. So Nikki writes, "I'm here to address the salaries of our teachers. I've been a teacher with the West Bend School District for 23 years. I'm currently a special education teacher at McLean. I have a bachelor's degree in social work, certified teaching license, and a master's degree, along with continuing education credits in reading and behavior management. I'm part of our Tier Two team and building leadership team at McLean. I'm sharing this with you to ensure you that I am well-qualified to do what I do. As teachers, we are tasked with doing more with less and for less, less time and less money. We are given curriculum after curriculum to use but are not always trained on the curriculum and in some cases, aren't allowed to use it at all. We are unable to complete required paperwork because our days are filled with student contact and not enough prep time. Many of us either stay late or take home paperwork that we are unable to get done during the workday. Many times, it's both. We have teachers that have two-income households and are still struggling to meet the demands of the current economic state. Many of us are a one-income family, and some are single parents with one income and are unable to afford to buy and maintain a house without getting one or two jobs outside of teaching, and not just the summer because our monthly bills aren't less during the school year. Teachers with bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, and continuous education are not making enough to pay today's basic monthly bills. We've been told to be creative in order to meet the needs of our students and the requirements the district has for us. Now, it's your turn. I'm asking you to be creative without giving teachers more to do and without taking more pay and benefits away from us. The relationship should be give-and-take. However, teachers continue to give more time and more effort while so much is taken away from us in the form of our salaries or benefits and our time. Please take all of this into consideration when deciding on our salary and our livelihood. Thank you."
Thank you. So that concludes our public participation portion. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and for their comments, and just to state that as chair, I'm very grateful for the speakers and their speeches, which were made with decorum, and they were very efficient. So, at this point, we'll move on to our next agenda item. This is a common point where people wish to depart, so we'll just take a pause, as anyone who wishes to depart may do so, and we'll continue on with our business shortly. All right, if there are any objections, maybe we can move forward with the consent agenda portion. So on our consent agenda tonight, we have the minutes of the January 9, 2023 regular board meeting and executive session, six contracts for approval, no resignations, and two retirements. With that, I would move to approve this consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Joel, motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move to reports, and our first item is curriculum report, and Ms. Melanie Ergot, our Curriculum Committee Chair, will give us an update. Melanie?
All right. Thank you. The Curriculum Committee met on January 17th. We had two items for discussion. The first one, Tina Van Rue presented middle-of-the-year star data for K through 10 in both reading and math. We went over how the benchmark scores are determined, and the data was presented for the middle-of-the-year testing to compare against the fall. And this data will be shared at the February 6th Board Meeting. And then Erin Faust presented on the Summer School Program Plan for 2023. It will include two terms again, like it did the last summer, and there will be including reading and math, along with other enrichment opportunities. And this is open to all residents in the West Bend School District, whether they attend the district for school or not. And this will be presented at the March 6th School Board Meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from Melanie? All right. We appreciate the update. And next is the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Wimmer?
Yep. Just a reminder that next Monday, January 30th, enrollment for our 4K programs opens. It's all completed online. You can choose between the six locations where our programs offered with our community partners. So we have locations at Kettle Marine, YMCA, Montessori Children's House, Jackson Area Community Center, and Living Word Child Development Center. As you know, too, the West Bend School District is the Head Start provider for all of Washington County, and enrollment for Head Start also opens next Monday on the 30th. That's offered at the Rolf's Education Center, Jackson Area Community Center, and Kettle Marine, YMCA, and West Washington Avenue. And for kindergarten, all of our children currently enrolled in the 4K program are automatically enrolled in kindergarten at one of our five elementary schools. Any who are not enrolled in our 4K program could also begin their enrollment process January 30th as well. And that's all online. If you have any questions, you can contact our main office, any one of our schools, but we have a registrar, Carol Santini. She can help walk you through that. You can come in in person to access the computer and walk through that together if you would like. So while we think of welcoming the new ones, some of our students are gearing up for high school, so our eighth graders and their family members are invited to gearing up for high school at East and West High Schools. That's going to be held Wednesday, January 25th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. The event gives students and their families some exposure to high school academics, athletics, clubs, and co-curriculars. Starts in the auditorium at 6:00 p.m. for a shared presentation, and then there are tours of the buildings where teachers will be available to speak about their academic departments and different courses. So I urge you to attend that event. Congratulations to our West Bend East senior, Favi Shong, earned a first-place award for the 39th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Art Contest in the high school category. All entries were completed using the theme Working Toward a World of Peace. It was sponsored by the Marcus Center for the Performing Arts, Bader Philanthropies, and Milwaukee County Transit. And you might recognize Favi's name. She's been here and honored for other awards for her art in the past. So congratulations, and just a little thank you for representing West Bend. Ice Bears Hockey on Saturday, January 28th, will mark their Military Appreciation Night for both the JV game at 4:00 p.m. and the Bar City game at 6:00 p.m. They'll be playing at the Kettle Marine Ice Center in West Bend. There will be a silent auction and other activities. All proceeds will be donated to various military charities. So again, urge you to attend that event. And just an athletic shout-out, we should have a wall with the 100 Club. That would include Casey Gish, a senior wrestler for East, Ben Bast, a senior wrestler for West, and Connor and Cole Marisola, both West Juniors. They have all recorded their 100th win in wrestling this season, so not an easy feat, but congratulations. We are still in season for those athletes, so we can't wait to see how that will culminate. Several of those names were recognized in the past for representing West Bend at State as well. So in addition, Dawson Walters, a West freshman, has broken three West swimming records this season so far. One of them, the 200 Freestyle, was in place since 1984, so congratulations to Dawson. And one of the committees that I happen to sit on is the UW-Moarky-Washington County Committee. They're just exploring enrollment on that campus. It's collaborative between our county executive, as well as representatives from UW-Moarky System, K-12 Education. And at our last meeting, we were presenting what does the connection to campuses look like, not just our Washington County campus, but also Marine Park or other campuses. And that was a shared presentation with all of our other county public schools, like Germantown, Slinger, Kewaskom, Hartford, and myself. And I just thought I'd highlight a couple connections that we highlighted there. It was of interest for our committee members, and if you don't have sometimes students in the system, you forget, but you start kind of that college-career exploration piece with discovery play. You've heard, I think Jamie's in the room, on 4K Head Start, and it's when little kids start, you know, thinking, "I want to, I want to be a fireman for Halloween. I want to do this." They start thinking about their community and start exploring through play. Then in our upper elementary, we are partnered with Junior Achievement. Our students participate in Biz Town and other pieces like that. Our business professionals are in and showing kids different careers and representing. We do things at our middle school level where we start an ACP, or Academic Career Plan. It's like an individualized plan for students where they start exploring. They might have some preliminary career fair items. They might start thinking what their interests are, and we have exploratory classes. "I want to try this. I want to try art." And we start talking about the 16 career clusters and different pathways, and that helps kids get ready for course selection in high school. And I would have to read my list of high school opportunities. We've got career fairs, campus visits, co-ops, industry credentials, work-based learning, youth apprenticeships, and multiple clubs around those things. And we highlighted, for us, our partnership with, you're well aware of, the 29 courses that we offer through MPTC that are transcribed credits, but they also are nice in giving us space for our Advanced Construction Program. Our teachers go there. They just have the physical space for us. And they also offer associate's degrees in arts and science. Mason, I can't remember if he was here or not. He represented our district in meeting with state representatives. He was honored for being part of Mr. Sorsy's autos team, but he graduated with us one weekend with a diploma and also an associate's with Marine Park. And then segueing over to our partnerships with not just UW-Moarky, but we also do, you've heard us talk about cap courses or sometimes pie courses, but students can start accessing college-level courses and transcribed credits here at our high school. We partner right now with Oshkosh, Whitewater, and MSOE, and that is probably shifting to UW-Green Bay as we start exploring some STEM fields and Project Lead the Way courses with them. And then our Washington County campus is looking to bring up a new kind of tailor. They just started this year. Hartford had a few students, but just looking at a suite of courses that can be offered at a significant discount for our students. And we just connected that program with our counselors so they can start promoting that piece as well. So it's been a really interesting committee to participate in and look at all facets. Us having access to educational institutions, whether our students are entering the field of work, military service, or some type of college-career pathway, having access to training and partnering for our students to be able to do it at the high school level and begin, and even extend beyond, having that right in our community, in our backyard, is really special, and it's not something that everyone has. So I just thought, since we got to share those highlights with that committee, I'd make sure and share them with the board as well. That's all I had for my report, and if anyone had anything else they had questions about.
Any questions for the superintendent? All right. Hearing none. Thank you for your report, and we'll move on to the next item. So at the last meeting, we had a number of discussion items, and these have come back to us for action. And so what I'd like to do is, as I move through these, Superintendent Wimmer, I'm going to start by asking if the administration has any more information or changes on each of these, and maybe we'll have it and maybe not. Then we'll pause for questions, and we'll consider it for a motion. So if that's all right, let's proceed. So we'll start with the Head Start Bus Monitor waiver. Superintendent Wimmer, is there any additional information that the administration wishes to present?
No additional information. Both Head Start items are largely procedural pieces.
Can, can we just state for the people listening that might be concerned for what we discussed earlier?
Sure. Mr. Donaldson had some follow-up questions around the bus monitor piece, so that is a piece where we would automatically put a monitor on every single route, all of those. So we choose to get that waiver so we can push some of those funds into other pieces. We did talk about if there was specific incidents where transport due to a specific child need was maybe unsafe in some way, what individualized precautions we put. That doesn't preclude us from doing that or making alternative transportation arrangements in any way. So again, we're not choosing to disregard any safety. We just don't see it as a blanket approach. And there's been no issues around that piece. Again, if we're looking with individual situations, we would navigate those individually.
Other questions? Hearing none, I'd move to approve the Washington County Head Start Bus Monitor Requirement Waiver as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. Motion, second to approve the waiver. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion carries. Next is the Head Start Community and Self-Assessment. Superintendent Wimmer, is there any additional information to present on that one?
Correct. No additional information.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve the Community and Self-Assessment Review as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Joel and John. Motion and second to approve the Community and Self-Assessment Review as presented. Final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move to enrollment projections for open enrollment seats. Superintendent Wimmer?
Here, there was one change. Again, you'll recall in December and at our last couple meetings, we talked about the formulas utilized in different capacity pieces to dictate how many of those seats should be opened formally. Again, it's by state statute. The board has to pass every January. Again, we can choose to look at enrollment in an ongoing fashion, which we do to welcome students on an ongoing basis. But again, state statute requires that the board take an action and that we post that in advance of the open enrollment window for our families to know. So you see an addition of, I believe it's eight seats, looking across, it was a smattering of regular education seats and just a few of the special education seats. So you can see that chart where those fall.
We'll pause for questions. Nancy?
Superintendent Wimmer, could you just discuss, probably more so for those listening at home, but so I'm a parent and I, you know, currently live outside the district lines, but gee, I've got a third grader and I've got a seventh grader, and I'm considering school choice of them here to West Bend. Could you just explain, because obviously we're showing that we would have no availability. So how would that work for parents, or what's the process that they would go through?
So we would encourage people to still make that application. You have multiple selections, so maybe they're choosing us alongside another district, but we would encourage that. We look at enrollment, and I always, I'll make a commitment to call families every single week, you know, in August leading into that, because we hope to welcome them. And I always tell families, you know, "I'll call you the night before and tell you if I, if I have a seat." So we really monitor up to that. This creates space in that formula for move-ins, et cetera. So we're pretty strict on monitoring enrollment. We create some lottery lists, those kinds of things, so when we have opportunity, we can select from those things.
Thank you.
Other questions? John?
So I just see the unlimited for K4, K5, and I think we discussed earlier, once you're in from open enrollment, you're kind of, you're in the district through the rest of the time you want to be. So would we have a concern that if we open it up and have too many, or is that not really a concern?
We've not had that concern at those ages. We did start limiting and watching. Again, we can look at, I can find the history for you on those, but again, as an entry point, that it just hasn't been overwhelming to the system, and you're able to kind of grow and plan. And a lot of times, sometimes they're picking those lower grades because it's easier maybe for a parent with childcare, they're, you know, they're closer, and then we hook them and tell them how amazing we are. So it helps us grow our enrollment.
So I just see, so K5 is unlimited, and first grade's only one. If we get 25 people that come into K5, not saying that's going to happen, but is it sustainable for them to stay the next year then?
They, yeah, they don't, they don't come in classroom packages, as you were alerting, but it is a little bit nicer. Generally, we have enough room in our programs to do that, but then we always, through just general attrition with our staff, we're not becoming over-understaffed. We're able to kind of accommodate that. So I'm not, what I'm really mindful, to your point, is not making an obligation for the district where I'm welcoming people from, you know, non-residents and creating a financial hardship for our district in some way. So that's why you see us just take this conservative approach by limiting other pieces.
Hearing none, I would move to approve the enrollment projections for open enrollment seats as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Joel, motion and second to approve the projections for open enrollment seats. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion carries as well. Next is software to support rightsizing the district. Superintendent Wimmer?
Yeah, we've had some follow-up conversations. John Donaldson, as you know, is a member, his profession is in technology and that background, and helped frame some things that were going through his mind after our last discussion, as well as how we can help answer questions for constituents. So I think Tim and I will kind of speak to those pieces a little bit. I'll join Tim at the podium. We have those items.
All right. Good evening, board members. So thank you to Mr. Donaldson for reaching out. We had an opportunity to meet with him, as Ms. Wimmer said. A couple of questions arose around, you know, a little bit more about what the software is, and it really, it is a predictability software. We can load a variety of data sets in, currently our current enrollment, along with forecasted different enrollment pieces throughout our school district at that point in time, where we can start to forecast population pockets within our community here to help us, when we talk about rightsizing the school district, potentially looking at different buildings, different configurations of grade levels, all the way down to bus routes. And so there's unique areas in our school district, and Mr. Sarnow and the transportation team in Rightway do a really good job to try to eliminate this, where you get these fingers of pockets where a bus might go out here and a bus might go out here. Is there ways that we can adjust some of our boundaries to make that more specific and save the district and the taxpayers some money at that point in time? One of the things about this system is the ability for us to turnkey it very fast, so we are limited staff here. They work with a variety of schools, and they are our current vendor of ours. Over the years, it has been bought out by a couple of different companies. Throughout that time, we have been vendors with them and currently are vendors with them, and so they guarantee within a month that we're up and turning and ready to go at that point in time, and we want to be able to make sure that we meet the needs of the board and the community as we have these future conversations going forward.
Also, too, you know, I think one of your next best options when you talk about software that has this capacity is kind of riding the coattails of some type of transportation system, but it does not give the data complexity that I need. It just tells me where stops are and can kind of look at point in time. Also, in some of the other options, I'm beholden to someone else. I'm adding the cost of someone else to run that, and what I need is kind of this next year and a half window to do complex work and do it when we need to. Again, I don't look at this needing to be a long-term investment for our district, but we do need to do some long-term planning with this software. So that, that's kind of where we're getting why this product, why now, and why that need. So. Any other questions for us?
Questions?
Do you get multiple users out of this software?
Yes. I'd say there's going to be some primary users with myself, probably Peggy Schmidt, who serves as my assistant, as well as Yvonne, who does transportation, will be your three primary users. You're going to have adept people like Tim and other people who are looking at crossover data, you know, like Tina Van Rue, who you've seen before with DataPoints and doing some of those, but we would be your team of primary users, us three.
Other questions? All right. Hearing none, I would move to approve the software to support rightsizing the district as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. Motion and second to approve the software. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion carries. Mr. Hardison, since you are at the podium, Technology, Projects, and Budget. Any additional information to present?
I do.
Great.
So I added to up on the screen to the presentation I shared with you for it after our last board meeting. I did have a couple of board members, Mr. Ungert and Mr. Donaldson, who reached out with some questions, along with a community member, had an opportunity to answer those questions for those three people. Just wanted to share a little bit more. I may have one number misspoke, that the budgetary dollar that we are requesting as part of our project is a multi-year contract. It is not a single-year contract. So typically and very rarely, opposite of what we just asked you to approve, unless we have a very short time, we will look at a multi-year contract for all of our softwares.
That is two reasons. Number one is, is the cost of onboarding a software and working it through and training staff. Number two, we know we get a multi-year discount typically with all of our software vendors. Currently, we are using a free version of multiple systems of this. There is one vendor who comes to the top that is used by majority of our staff here over time. This is something that has been existence pre-COVID, was often used by our co-curriculars and athletics teams here and was used as a way to communicate changes in athletic events, practices, things like that. What we are really doing is to look to identify and streamline that one identified communication system here, just like we have the @wbsd-schools.org email address for all of us here. Currently with the free system, we don't have the accountability we would have with an email system. So if we need to look into something or investigate something, all the archive pieces and so forth that go with it. And with one identified system, we then write the rules and processes that go with it and the expectations and our parents and our students know what that expectation is for what grade levels and so forth. It also allows us a lot of features around auto-loading things where our staff is doing the work behind the scenes. That costs time is money, right? There's that time is money piece. And if I can set up integration where automatically if Mr. Ungar and Mr. Donaldson change classes here at semester at the high school and they're now in two new elective classes, that automatically populates in the next system, that's time and money our staff is able to spend on other aspects of the educational piece as we go forward. It's also something then that we can provide technology support for and that we can provide those access pieces for our families and so forth. I foreshadow this with the, this is the budgetary dollars. We would still have to go out and look at multiple companies and decide which one is the correct one. There are a few different players in this field. We would look at things with integrations with our student information system, our learning management system, Canvas. We would look at things like safety and security around, can I integrate it with Gaggle and some of those other security pieces that we have here? And then we would bring forth back a contract like we do all new contracts here, being a new system that we would have going forward. But we've had this over the years. We continue to get asked by our staff and our sites for this. For example, we do have some of our staff, we have bought a couple of cellphones at Head Start to try to see engagement with families when we text them versus sending an email or making a phone call. We see increased engagement and I continue to get asked more and more for what is this system that we can use as a whole here in the district versus letting teachers pick and choose which system or picking up their personal cellphone and texting somebody. So I just wanted to follow up on those pieces. If there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Ms. Wimmer?
And I think too, you know, when you look at that, that context is helpful. You know, we're not making that commitment right now in this moment. You're making the commitment to set aside dollars and go through that. But also, it's not anyone's vision that all of a sudden we're going to engage first graders in texting about their homework or anything like that. These are tools that are in existence, in use. And again, people are picking up accounts that aren't accountable to us in free versions or feeling the need to use a personal device, which we do not want happening in the system. So it's not introducing that. But there are times where you're direct, that text directly to student groups, like you said, clubs, sports, especially with your older students. It's just easier for us to be able to have accountability and set the process and parameters for their use.
I guess going along, I mean, I realize that there are some parents who prefer that mode of communication versus an email. And I'm sure there are some people who maybe don't have emails or they claim to not and just don't check those free Gmail ones, but whatever. I guess I would like to see somewhere, and I'm sure you probably have this literature somewhere maybe, and since we're redoing the website, this might be an appropriate place to have some type of disclaimer to say, you know, some of the text messaging is, it's not monitored. You know, when you're on a chat and it's like, hey, this isn't monitored or, you know, whatever, or you get the little irritating pop-up to say, hey, do you have a question or whatever? Just some kind of disclaimer because I would hate for a student or a parent to think, gee, it's midnight and I'm going to text message a teacher and then, you know, the next morning at 8:00 a.m., the parent's saying, well, I didn't get a response back. Well, right. I mean, you know, in the business world or really in most worlds, we assume there's kind of this 24-hour, you know, I have 24 hours to get back to you, et cetera. So I would just want to see some kind of disclaimer so that we don't have any false, I guess, false hopes from a parent or even a student who's doing a last ditch attempt like, ew, Mr. Harder didn't get that assignment done. It's 10:00 p.m. Can you help me out? And Mr. Harder's like, yeah, that's not how this works.
So we have some of that for our email system now. I would have been that kid emailing at 10:00 o'clock at night asking for help with my last minute assignment, probably when I was in high school. If, whatever system we would select, Ms. Justman, we would do a rollout to the district. Part of that before we would do that, I do see a potential change, you know, in our policy around as we talk to, you know, these are the systems that we use in identifying district systems in AR. We would do a rollout with a communication plan to families of, hey, we're bringing this on. This is the system we use. This is how you sign up. This is what it looks like on your phone for student, parents, et cetera. And then these are the expectations. If you text us at 10:00 o'clock at night, you're not going to get a response. And we can use that to then take the same expectations and/or norms and norm that in all of our communication pieces. I had a student who emailed me about a blocked website at 11:30 at night, hoping it would be open by the next day at 6:00 a.m. Now, I happen to be up at night and was able to help that student. I'm not the norm and I don't expect every teacher or staff member to respond at 11:30 at night, nor is that my norm every night. But we can certainly use that as we communicate that to all of our, our staff and our stakeholders that these are kind of our communication expectations here and that if you contact us, this is what you should expect. And if you don't hear back, please reach out again.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
You kind of mentioned some of it. I was, I was going to discuss some of the policy and the updates that we might need for handbooks and, you know, surrounding these systems. So do you know how many current systems we have now that staff and, you know, parents and stuff?
Typically, I know of two or three that staff typically use that are texting type systems. That does not include the, I just pick up my cellphone and text, hey, here's my number.
Because that wouldn't be appropriate.
Yeah, that would not be appropriate. We want to prevent that and say that is our system here.
But that should already be in the handbook or the policy, right?
Yes, we should not be using personal devices to text. We want to give that avenue of communication towards that, things like we, you know, will we use Google Voice and the ability to text through that? Or would we move to a different system? So there's Ramond, there's Intrago has a system, there's a few other systems, whatever we say, that's that rollout to our stakeholders. There are internal rollout, now this is what you do. Do we need to change a policy or is it just a handbook? But that would all come with that over time. And a recommitment to those expectations post-COVID where there were a variety of communication tools used to engage our families at home at that point in time.
Okay. And then would we require a parent's signature for use if a student's going to use it? And is there, is it really necessary for a student to have access or is this just district-to-parent communication?
So it would be both. We would be bringing forth the proposal for some student grade levels. Right now, we are looking at the 512 grade level with 56 being predominantly only for maybe potentially co-curriculars and clubs and athletics, those types of things. We would gain feedback from our internal stakeholders of what they're looking for to communicate first, but we would lay that clearly out. And then there's the aspect of, you know, what does this look like for our families? And then we would communicate that out. We would either have a piece in our back-to-school registration about signing off on that or some sort of an opt-out process depending upon which way we go at that point in time. But we would really look to engage our teachers and our administrators of, you know, is this appropriate? And Ms. Wimmer said, we're not going to open this up to texting kindergartners and messaging kindergartners and all that. We just want one appropriate tool for those grade levels at that point in time.
Okay. And then how, how do we, how will we control the, I guess, the, from the, from the aspect of a teacher one-on-one communication with a student through one of these apps or texting services?
Yep. So, so we lay the expectations, just like other handbook pieces. If we then set the expectation and all of a sudden it is reported to us, then we have to look into it as.
But it has to be reported.
Yes.
So somebody's not saying, hey, we have a, we have a two-party communication or, you know, conversation going on, one going out, one coming in with our system.
Yeah, we will know it if we use the system, but I won't know if you're using your personal device to text or if you set something up on your personal email. Those are all those that rules go with it, just like we say, look, you have a professional email here as a district employee. That is what you are supposed to use. That is what is archived and so forth. But if we do have an instance of inappropriate use to our handbook, it's reported here like any other rule. And then depending upon where it goes and who investigates it at that point in time.
And how many times do we get reports like that? Do you know?
It's been a little while since I've had one in my nine years here. I want to say three, four years back is when the last one that we had.
But we have had incidents where we've had inappropriate.
Now, when I use the word inappropriate, I'm not going to use, let me rephrase inappropriate.
An adult talking to a student individually is inappropriate.
But it was, hey, I'm texting you about, hey, we'll meet here or the event has changed or whatever else at that point.
But I mean, that's, that's communication outside or, or bypassing the parental guardian or, you know, the person that's basically in charge of that student outside of the school. So in my, in my eyes, that would be inappropriate still.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to phrase for the audience. My definition of inappropriate sometimes with what I get to deal with is very different than that.
Is, is there a way we can just, I mean, I've, I've had, I've just had some, I've had some concerns from constituents outside in the, you know, in the district that are concerned that this is going to basically bypass the parents, you know, kind of leave the parents outside of the loop if they decide they don't want to use it, but the student is, which, you know, I think then, then we're, we're basically only giving, you know, half the people information if the student doesn't want to tell the parents and they don't have to, and then you can see there's a situation there between families.
Yeah.
To your, to your point, because we started engaging that conversation, you brought forward some good questions when we were talking about those things. I think one of the things is we're identifying that there's a problem with the current system, right? And, and we know it's not perfect. We know that we need some resolution there. So we have to, in this next budget cycle, put some dollars aside so that we can keep tackling it. I think that kind of given that, engaging, you know, maybe yourself as a board member having that perspective and in your field, our team, some teachers, some parents and starting to talk about it now so we can plan for it even before we go out for an RFP or things like that. I think that would help create some kind of work group around what does communication look like? You know, if we're revamping the website and doing those things, they should be partners in that and we should be just kind of talking about those things and, and kind of bringing them to fruition so that when and if we get there and review something and select something, we know what needs to come with it. So like you said, there's, there's a lot of questions, but we, we know that there's an issue and we've got to just tag some dollars in this budget that we, we've got to clear it up.
And I understand that. And I understand that, that, you know, there's a growing, there's always a growing, you know, technology aspect of, of the school district and how to communicate. Is there a way, and I would just like to, I guess I would just like maybe to, I don't know if we can amend, but when we do roll this out, is there a way we can roll it out in a very small thing to just parents to see how we can test it out, see if they really like it, see how the community is engaging with it before we actually start giving it to students? So we can, why can't we find the holes first, you know, find the?
We can look at that. I think it's, we want to just address that issue as soon as possible. Part of that is the RFP process. Part of it is the vendor. So some vendors may require those controls where we can set up that any message is sent to the kid is also sent to the parents. Those are the things we want to ask. Those things are going to help us define what that rollout might be. We might roll it out just to the high school first and then work our way down. I think we want to be able to ask those questions of vendors and go shopping to find the correct solution and put all those safety things into play and then figure out our best next steps at that point.
And then you just brought up a good point. So if, yes, if a student's getting a message, how can we, how can we make sure that the parent's also getting the same message? Will this also integrate with email?
So it depends upon which solution we go with. And those are the questions we're going to ask as we go out to RFP in that point in time.
Because I think that might be kind of, kind of a need-to-have thing, you know, to integrate whatever text message platform we're going to use with our email platform because if we have people that don't so much want a text message or a message app on their phone, some people don't like apps.
Yep.
You know, some people don't want to scroll to another page on their phone. If we don't, if somebody doesn't want that, then we still need to have access to an email to have the same information that a student's getting. That's just, I think that's, that's definitely a necessity.
And those are questions we're going to ask. And in some cases, if it's not the built-in natural way, there's things in controls and that we can put in and the rules and expectations of you aren't allowed to communicate directly to just a student at whatever grade level. Let's say that is the 56. It has to be a communication to mom and dad. And I've seen districts who have said, whatever goes out in the messaging app also goes out in email. So if you're the parent who does both, you get both messages in grade. Hopefully you read one or the other. Those are some of those rule pieces behind the scenes that we would do at that point in time as part of the rollout process.
Yeah, I would really like to not see it go to five and six. I think five and six is way too young. If a kid has a phone really that, you know, early, I mean, that's going to be few and far between. I mean, unless you got a kid walking to school by themselves and you want to keep track, you know, stuff like that. But that just seems really early to start getting to.
And I think those are some of those feedback. We've had Silverbrook ask that for parents and sometimes for the co-curricular aspect of that, that they offer over there because that is sometimes weekend events and after school events. But I think those are the pieces we want to come back and ask our staff and parents as we go forward.
I just would hate to approve this and then it not go, you know, I don't think students should get stuff that early on a text messaging. I mean, maybe at a high school level if a parent approves, but I mean, really, I think we should pilot this to the older group and parents, you know, make sure we have, everybody's integrated to get the same messaging. And I just, how can, how can I be assured that that's going to happen?
And I think some of those are things we're going to have to go forward. The next pieces, we would go out to RFP if this was approved and then we would come back with a contract and a rollout plan that would come back to the board at that point in time that would include some of those pieces.
Well, let me just clarify Mr. Donaldson's question. And first of all, I appreciate the questions. I think this is a good preview of the interest of the board and the requirements for this, but this sounds like we're kind of requirements gathering, which is very important. I just want to be very, very clear. We're looking at the budget at this point. So if we pass this budget, the next step would be RFP, selecting, discussing requirements?
Yes.
So there still will be a great opportunity for this.
And that contract would have to come back to the board. And if you're not satisfied at that point in time, that would be all the pieces that we're starting to get into today.
And in absence of approving money for this, there wouldn't be work in this space. So you talk about?
Yep, we would leave it as a status quo and cut it off or whatever else and continue to deal with what we can.
Okay. Other questions?
My questions are more related to the rollout piece of it. When I, you know, think of my own kids and the work they do in the classroom, their teachers use Canvas. And so if they have any sort of homework assignments, there's a test coming up, teachers are communicating directly with those, those kids in that class through Canvas. There's also the ability for the student to message the teacher either through Canvas or through email. And obviously, we have record of those types of communications. My family uses this Remind app a lot with coaches and, you know, the dance team or whatever. And it's typically just one-way communication with a coach saying, hey, we're 20 minutes away from the high school, we'll be home in 20 minutes. Or reminder that the pizza party's tomorrow, bring your 10 bucks, you know, whatever. So what you're saying is right now they're using a free version of that app where that version of that app where that communication is not tracked.
Yes. It is only tracked in their personal account, not necessarily tied back to us or monitored or anything.
It's not being monitored at all.
If we have to look into something, it is, I need your username and password.
Other thoughts? Kurt?
I have a question, and I'm going to tell you why I'm context of the question asking, and it's probably not a popular question. But the context why I'm asking is trying to find as much dollars. We're hearing the teachers loud and clear. Cost of living, we've adjusted a lot of our other salaries, at least I'm just speaking on my half of myself of being in support of of trying to find money. So this is my context of the question, trying to find money for some cost of live. You have Chromebooks as the most expensive part of the budget.
Yep.
What were to happen if we only buy 600 devices and we cut that budget in half for one year?
So you do two things. Number one is, is we potentially are using end-of-life devices in our cycle. End-of-life devices do not update, and we do not meet state testing requirements in some cases to be able to update them. You're also pushing off and creating a larger bubble in the system of things we talk about that often Dave and I do around equipment types of things. If we push that off, that becomes a larger bubble at a later point in time where you have to address that at that point. So we try to keep our equipment within security and and life cycles so that we can make sure that they are getting the most secure updates, we can apply the most pieces of our apps, we can do our state assessments and all those different pieces with that. So that is that cycle where we typically have a kid come in in kindergarten, they get a new device, they keep it till fifth grade, they get a new one in fifth grade, and then they get a new one at night.
They get it for five years. That's why I'm doing the math on.
Five and then four and four, and we see, honestly, we see.
5,900 students if you count kindergarten through, and you got 1,200. So that means 20% of the students are getting new equipment, and I'm just doing the math. What would happen? Could we put it off for a year and not do that? That's context of the question as you're looking for money. So.
Or would we end up buying 1,200 next year?
Depends upon the year. Yeah. The cycle, it it becomes when they come end of life. We also do self-maintaining here, so we now get paid when we actually fix our own devices here. So that's a generating income piece that goes with that now. That's that bubble that I'm trying to prevent to keep it somewhat stable in our budget as we go forward.
Well, and just being cognizant of, it feels like that's what we've inherited with our facilities, is that kind of piece. I don't want to recreate it with technology. If that's what you're looking for, then I would, I would put something else in that bucket. But I get what you're saying on finding every dollar of those pieces. I would just recommend going elsewhere for it.
Again, the context is a, is a $600,000 line item, and it's a big line item.
That's a good question.
Good question. Other thoughts? Other questions? All right. I'm test to see where the board is at, because I'm going to make a motion to approve the technology budgets, technology projects in budget as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Motion to approve the technology projects in budget as presented. Final discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
We'll register Kurt Kurt as a no. The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We'll move to student fees for 2023, 2024. And I believe Mr. Sarno is ready to present on this item. Say Superintendent Wimmer, is there additional information to present?
No. Student fees, recall that Mr. Sarno had brought forward just the high school because of the timing of course selection and the printing of the course booklet. There's no additional information. Again, an overall increase from $85 to 100 in the instructional fee, but a removal of over 10 different fees that had been, people had to add to their cart continuously. So it's an attempt to clean that up, and the timeline of why this came forward first was because of that course selection and the nature of that booklet. So same information.
Any questions? See, Mr. Sarno is is just ready for any questions. Appreciate, appreciate that.
Absolutely. I'll move to approve the high school student fees for the 2023-2024 school year from $85 to $100 with the removal of several supplementary course fees as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. We have a motion and a second to approve the fees as presented. Final discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And let's see. Moves to vehicle purchase amendment. Superintendent Wimmer, any additional items?
Again, no additional information. Mr. Sarno had approached the board at the last meeting to just change strategy. The market was changing and finding more inventory. So just looking for a motion to approve him pursuing that action.
Any additional questions? Ms. Arigot, I think last time you had made a motion. Do you care to make a motion on this?
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the vehicle purchase amendment as presented, including two ton passenger vans and a nutrition department delivery truck.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. John, motion and second to approve the vehicle purchases presented. Final discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And audited financials for 2021-2022, effective as of 6/30 of 2022, and fund balance designation.
Again, no additional information. We heard from our auditor directly at our last meeting, as well as Mr. Sarno. So just looking for you to formally accept those audited financials. If you have additional questions, we're happy to take those.
Great. Any questions? Hearing none, I would move to accept the June 30th, 2022 audited financials for the 2021-2022 fiscal year as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to approve the audited financials. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We are on then to 2022-2023 revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through December 31 of 2022.
This is a new item. I'd ask Mr. Sarno to present. Just, he gives an update quarterly. Generally, you see this in the consent area, but quarterly, he likes to just make sure that there's no additional questions, talk about what he's seeing as trends.
Thank you for the time this evening. Appreciate the support on the other three topics. Very important as we complete some of our cycles. This is one of the quarter end, so the information from July 1st through the end of December, the information provided, summary of revenues and expenditures, the information broken out, just a little bit disaggregated, more than what our typical consent months are, where other information is brought forward for your awareness. We try to track the budget actual, and then not just that, but again, two years in a row to make sure that we're identifying different trends. So the information provided, again, broken out in green by revenues, kind of that orangish salmon by expenditures, general fund information, making sure that we're monitoring the money coming in as well as the expenditures going out, watching salaries, benefits, large areas. At this point in time, no, no concerns for any areas. We're just monitoring to make sure that our salaries are hitting the target of the budgeted areas as well as the benefits. A little bit more with health insurance, we're self-funded, and making sure that those claims are in line with the the premiums that we've been collecting between the employee portion as well as the district. Next area, which is our gift fund, this includes mainly areas, and it is gifts, but it's mainly for student groups, areas where student clubs at all levels have raised funds. We might be having trips that our monies are being collected, or just other groups where they've raised dollars for trips and competitions, things like that. Fairly large dollar amount that we like to monitor. There's a separate bank account for this, but just monitoring that activity. Again, our revenues this year are fairly in line with where they were last year. We are seeing just a little bit of a slowing of some of the expenditures. So I'm monitoring that, making sure that we identify some of the areas where we have fund balance and the purposeful use of those in moving forward. Fund 27 is our special education, the middle of the page. These are all the programs and services for students within our district. Many of these areas, the revenues, we've, we've been claiming grants, monitoring that, money through CISA and collecting that. So no trends that are outlying at this point in time of the year. Large transfer that happens at the end of the year, a little over $9 million that that's happens just prior to the audit. But again, this big area that we're monitoring, revenues and expenditures, are the salaries, benefits, some of those services, the larger dollar amounts that we're monitoring. Again, no large variances that I'm seeing, a little bit of a decrease in some of the purchase services areas compared to last year, but the actual dollar amount is fairly in line. It's just seeing a little bit of a variance in the percentage in comparison to last year. So again, monitoring those areas. Third area in this page, Fund 29, which is our Head Start program. That increase that we're seeing, just a slight increase, allowed per the COVID dollars related to that program that we're offering as a countywide service. Very, very little variance that we're seeing in relation to the expenditures. I am happy to say that our, we're monitoring cash flow this year, and you can see that in this revenue. We're monitoring claims, making sure that we're getting those dollars in because we're finally earning interest again. So making sure, we just got past one window where finances can get tight for districts with cash flow monitoring. So monitoring that for the year end, making sure that we're timely with some of those areas. Next two areas that we have are our non-referendum debt and our referendum debt. So these are our payments per the schedule of these debt issuances with our referendum debt, or excuse me, our non-referendum debt, interest only at this point in time. We will see in April principal and interest, so in line compared to last year as well as the debt schedule. Our non-referendum, or excuse me, our referendum debt, that you do see a little bit of activity compared to last year. We had the refinancing that that landed in last year. So when we take that refinancing out, this, the expenditures to date are per our schedule of payments. So principal and interest in line, no concerns that we have at this point in time. Nothing anticipated for the rest of the year. Fund 41, this is our first of three areas where we have dollars set aside for capital projects. These are dollars, a little bit more spending in comparison to last year. Last year, we even saw a few more delays with wrapping some projects up. However, that being said, we did put additional dollars into this fund where we moved it from our general fund into the Fund 41 in the top section. But projects are in line. Mr. Ross and his team are wrapping these up, anticipate that last million dollars being expensed here as we wrap up the school year. Fund 46, the only activity at this point in time, there is fund balance that lies in this fund. But again, interest income, we're actually seeing some in comparison to last year and in previous history, but happy to have those dollars. Any interest earned stays in that fund for future use. Fund 49, we do show that there are dollars set aside from the Barton Elementary sale, a little over $540,000, but we make sure that if we had any planned activity, that would be represented here. Area that's just a little bit, keeping, keeping an eye on this is our Fund 50, which is our nutrition services, our food services, providing meals, breakfast, lunch, snacks to students throughout the year. This is our first year where we do not have the the federal free assistance that has taken place the last couple of years, monitoring that closely, looking at our participation rate for the year. But as it is so far, we are trending well. Mr. Dembski and his team are doing well. We're monitoring our staffing levels. They're even making improvements with the meals, making some slight adjustments to the menus and and what we're offering to students. So very happy with that offering. Fund 73 is our other post-employment benefit trust. So these are dollars set aside, district dollars for the pension related to health continuation as well as other tax-sheltered annuity payments to previous employees. Trending well. It is slightly higher in regards to some of the expenditures in relation to who's all participating and continuing with these expenditures directly related to our health performance. So we're monitoring that closely. Again, interest is doing very well, so that's another revenue source that didn't exist at this time last year. Fund 80 is our community services fund. Those are those programs outside of the typical school day. We are trending well on the expenditure side, as would be for those co-curricular sports, both the Badgers, well, Silverbrook, our school liaison officers, other programs that are associated with this. So all in all, with community services fund. I did, I should have made a note earlier, we receipt all of our levies. We have received both property tax payment as well as some state aid in various forms, but we recognize all of those in our Fund 10, which is our general fund. So some of the different areas where we receive other levies aren't yet recognized until our Fund 10 budget is populated and fully, fully received. But our Fund 80 is one of those areas. Last area that we have is our Fund 99, where the cooperative host of of girls hockey, that season is well underway. We're a little bit ahead of schedule compared to last year in collecting those fees from other school districts for those participating athletes. But we're in line on the expenditure side as that fund or that sport has has started for the year.
Just a minor correction. It's the boys team that we're the fiscal agent for, the Ice Bears.
I apologize. Thank you.
Mr. Sarno, excuse me, Mr. Sarno, is this a, is this a report through the end of the year through December?
This is a report through the end of the year, and I'm embarrassed because I do see that up at the top there is a heading.
The title just needs to be swapped on that.
It's September. Yep, I apologize for that.
That's right. Nope, for the, for the good of the permanent record, if maybe that can be amended.
It is, and I will make sure that that's updated.
That's right. Nope, the agenda explained it as such. I just wanted to be sure that was the case.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. No problem. Other questions? So normally, this is in our consent agenda. So we would normally take action on it in the consent agenda.
Yeah, no, quarterly, he brings it forward as a standalone item to go into more depth and give you that range of what it looks like over time. So it appears quarterly as an action item for you.
Yep. Great. I move to accept the June 30th, oh, sorry, wrong line. I would move to accept the revenue and expenses in the aggregate as presented through the first two quarters of the current fiscal year. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Joel. Motion and second to accept the revenues and expenses in the aggregate. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. All right. We move on to our discussion items and a number of policy items first reading. The policy committee has been very busy. And so Superintendent Wimmer, I think you're going to kind of walk us through this in chunks, so to speak.
Yeah, I think sometimes it's a little easier to take a look in chunks. We are tackling the 400 series. We had a couple that I'll get to, different series, but needed updating. So recommended for review as part of the 400 series. We reviewed them, but we recommend no change. We're an overall policy on parking related to student parking. We have an updated kind of guide that goes with it and a process. We talked about reviewing those pieces. But as far as the policy language, we don't have any recommendation for change. We did talk about the process and procedure for getting those. And in the, in that process procedure, we talked about things like current registration and all those. So we, we have those pieces. We'll bring forward the AR that's got some of those details. Our associate principals have been working on that slate as well as the discipline ones, and they'll come back to policy for that in-depth review. But as far as the overall umbrella policy language, it's just a general umbrella. Again, it's that kind of supplementary piece we wanted to see in our conversation about some updates around expectations for students in parking. And for 60 awards and scholarships, there are actually just no recommended changes. It was up to date and aligned. Any questions on the ones that we talked about? Again, no change in the policy. We are going to look at the kind of administrative rules around parking, but no, no language change. And then there's the slate of recommend, recommendations for revision. I mean, it's, just walk through those pieces, and you can click on that PDF, and you can see that bucket together. Mr. Ongert in his committee update alluded to this. We had Former 188, which is the high school configuration review process. We're not seeking a change to that policy, but it does need to have a number change. 119 would be in alignment with the system of coding and numbering. And this is the one where we ask the students to take a look within their student government. So if they've got any additional recommendations. But it just lays out the questions to ask and the process around that. Again, no context changes, just needing a number change. There were two policies that are in the 300 series, both the Start College Now program as well as the Early College Credit Program. Both of those, and I should be more clear when I say update titles, it's not the title of the policy, it's the title of the personnel who might have some oversight in the policy. Most often, I see it as a director of pupil services or someone with, and it needs to be changed to director of student services or the way we refer to director of business, that kind of thing. So that's what I meant in that. And then if you look at that in color, our, just some tweaking to the eligibility criteria, state statutes oversee this piece, so we're not able to change those things. But if you look at, we're just clarifying the eligibility for people who may go to policy to read that. Also, for our own staff, you've got eight different counselors, all of that looking at those pieces. So it just helps clarify that. But it's in keeping with expectations through statute. Any question on those two and the why behind those proposals? Again, looking for that in the lineup at this time so that we're ready for course selection in in advance of the next year. The next piece is education in homeless children and youth. Again, just a personnel title change within that, no change in the context. Same with the 411.3 Children in Foster Care, personnel title change, no change in the content. For 422 enrollment and tuition, this is where we suggested a full replacement. I've left our language there in black. The full replacement is in green, and that's in keeping with the WASB legal guidance. And it's around enrollment and when we charge or don't charge tuition for families. There's other nuances to enrollment, early entrance, all of those. They all have their own policy. So this is one facet of enrollment, not taking into, like I said, all of those others. Our school psychologists and our director of student services, Emily Melstrand, were working on that slate of policies. There's a policy around corporal punishment, use of physical force, including physical restraint. Again, just a personnel title change, no changes to the content. Again, anyone listening, it's that we don't do that. There's, there's no corporal punishment that's, that's acceptable in our system or our state. 454, child abuse and neglect, a full replacement is recommended to reflect the most updated legal guidance, again, from WASB, in keeping with our current practice. Again, all of our staff are mandatory reporters. We go through specific training and signs for abuse and neglect. We talked about some of those training components for our staff as reporters and how we support that during policy. 457, suicide prevention, intervention and post-vention, requesting a full replacement to reflect, again, updated legal guidance from WASB as well as some more robust language. I think what we had was very small. It's in keeping with what our practice looks like. 491 was the custodial, non-custodial parent rights, a full replacement, again, up-to-date legal guidance from WASB. So those ones with that full replacement, taking a look at, understanding that it's more, it's aligned with our practices here. And we did have a slate of recommendations for removal. Nepotism, this was one that the policy committee took up in fall and sent to legal for specific legal review outside of WASB, in addition to our own legal counsel. legal review outside of WASB, in addition to our own legal counsel. There are five state statutes that guide this, so they saw no reason. So we had a robust discussion around, you know, what does that look like, where it sits in handbooks, et cetera, as well as schoolage parents, insurance and accidents. They're not necessary or content is covered elsewhere. So those were our pieces recommending for removal. Any questions about those? Like I said, the largest ones, I really tried to highlight if there was a significant amount of language change being proposed.
This is a first reading, so this will come back to, to a future board meeting for additional consideration. All right. Hearing on, I think we can move then to our next topic, which is safety discussion.
Yeah, we talked at our last board meeting about creating space to continue the conversation around safety. Specifically, the board designated some additional funds. At our last work session, we heard from our safety professionals, first responders, police, fire, et cetera. So in thinking about that assessment, where we were, we highlighted on that dashboard kind of what some of our needs were. I asked Dave Ross as well as Tim Harder to look at those pieces and just make some recommendations from their perspectives and our work with law enforcement to at least start a conversation with the team today.
So Dave and I and Jen had an opportunity to meet again today and talk about some of the different recommendations we'd bring forward. And really, we looked at three, potentially four proposals for the board to consider. And then with one recommended piece, I'll talk about the first three and I'll give Dave the last one. So a couple of needs that you saw brought up is, is we have some needs around our safety and security around our camera system related to some of the work that we're doing already with our door system. So we are about halfway through with the implementation of our door alerting system in the district. We've been testing it and using it at three of our buildings. We know we have a need for additional cameras throughout the district primarily to cover our interior hallways in certain places and so forth. So that would be one recommendation that we could look to use those dollars for in terms of adding additional cameras to our system here. One thing that I always want to remind this board, and we talk about internally, that's really important, cameras come and systems like this come with additional costs such as licensing, renewals, server space, replacements over the years. So as we continue to add the number of cameras, I know I've been in this role nine years and, you know, it used to go in, and our dashboard of cameras was like this at each building. It has greatly expanded over time. So that would be the first thing that we would bring forth for a conversation.
Sorry, hold up before you go. This is probably more a question for Superintendent. So in this fund, or maybe Mr. Sarno, as we move forward, so we've designated additional funds for this year, can we pay for the maintenance and the additional server space and all of that in the future out of the same fund? Or does that have to come out of an IT fund in the future?
Let me answer that one. That's a good question. As was shared a few moments ago in that previous discussion, so Fund 80, community services funds, things outside of a typical school day, it gets very difficult to start blending between if we didn't have Fund 80, would we stop doing that? So this is one of those areas that it doesn't necessarily pass that test. We...
Well, I would argue, if we're looking at TIF information or TIT information, the but for pass, I mean, the but for test, I mean, we wouldn't have this expense but for the fact that we did the initial investment. So I would kind of try and bend your arm and argue that point a little more.
It's not our arm that needs to be bent. We're all willing to bend. I, I think one of the, the things, like you said, we want the board to be cognizant of things then that are going to have cost in perpetuity, right?
Right, and that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
How do we pay for it in the future? So you're telling us that the upgrades or whatever to these cameras, five years down the road, probably even sooner sadly, right? That has to now be built into the IT budget, correct? So I guess I just want to be clear that everyone understands. What you approved tonight, you are passing on to future budgets, not in this line item, where we have some ability to make some changes. This has to go back to the revenue cap area in our budget. So just so everyone's on the same page about that, because that's a huge difference.
And here's just a clarification. All we're doing is looking from our perspective and giving some recommendations. There's nothing in front of you to approve. There's not, it's, it's just an impetus for discussion. So don't feel pressured that you have to approve or do anything. You might take these and think about them and go, you know what, but I'm thinking of this. Not in their recommendations. I've been working with the police chief. You've seen them post some community liaison pieces. So we were talking about that cross candidate pool and how to pull in some of that staff and, and what we could do. So that's still a work in progress in addition to this. So we're, we're just not to that point to have anything firm. It's just for discussion. So please don't feel that pressure tonight.
No, but I guess when you're going through these items, please discuss that, because I wouldn't want to handcuff, ha ha, that's a funny one, or shackle the future boards who are not anticipating these costs. And, you know, as we've discussed, we heard from a lot of teachers tonight, we've been discussing the teacher shortage in general. That's, that's going to keep coming at you, all of you in this room, for the next several years. So, I mean, these costs need to be considered that, you know, what it costs today is coming out of a special fund. What the upkeep will cost in the future has to come back to the main budget, where we still have the problem of revenue caps. And I will continue to hammer this for my next six meetings. That if you want to change the educational state in Wisconsin, you need to talk to the legislators about the revenue caps. This is killing our district and other districts like us. So we can sit here all day and debate this, but the problem is out of our hands. It's at Madison, and that's where some change needs to happen. So I'm going to get off my soapbox now about that. But that's going to continue to haunt all of you for decades to come if we don't get that changed at the Madison level.
One of the things that you probably should be aware of is that I do have a small amount of money set inside the capital budget on an annual basis for replacement of cameras. It isn't a huge amount of money right now because everything's relatively new, but over time, it does go up a little bit.
Yeah, but that budget alone is already severely underfunded, and we are so far behind on any type of improvements at every single school that we have. It's embarrassing. I'm sorry, I'm not like barking at you, but I'm just stating the merely obvious. So it, it just, it's a continued problem that we have, similar to, you know, when, when you brought up before Kurt about, you know, maybe we should not buy some computers. And I, you know, in the back of my mind, I'm like, well, that's what they said 25 years ago. Let's put off that maintenance. And now we sit here going, oh, Jackson's about to fall over, and we've got a serious problem. So we, we can't continue to put things off. We have to look at them in a realistic manner.
Yep. I'll just add, I did have a question, or I did have a note here. What is the ongoing price per, you know, what you guys have calculated out for what we're going to need for budget for future? On each of the items, just, you know, just a quick number, this is what it's going to cost.
So I, I don't have that number in front of us right now. It's really more, these are proposals for you to consider and say, yeah, we want to go down this avenue or not. One of the thing I've been working with Dave and his team and my team on and our security vendor that we get our, our installation from is, is we are actually in a add but consolidate mode right now. So with the advent of newer technology in cameras, I can put in a 360-degree camera instead of having to put in four separate cameras that point down kind of across hallway. When I do that, I can buy one license and free up three licenses. When we go to put in more, at least I'm not adding three additional licenses. I'm just buying cameras and some of those. That will take us some time to do, because the same people doing that are also doing our door installations right now across the district. But if we would, you know, if the board would ask that that's something we'd want to pursue, we would go deeper into that and really start to develop that rotational cycle. But we will run our cameras as long as we can. We have some of them that are over 11, 12 years old at this point in time. And knock on wood, we, somebody gets on a ladder and they work every once in a while, and sometimes we have to replace them. So yeah, those would be things we'd bring back if the board would so like to go down that road. All right, second item, as we look at our new door alerting system here and some of our security pieces, working with some of the new pieces, we would look at some sort of a security center dashboard in each of our offices. So a big screen TV with those main cameras that you can see where somebody is coming in and out, you know, just like we have here at the district office. We have a intercom system where you have to buzz yourself in. We have that at each of our schools here. We would look to deploy that in all of our buildings. That would tell us three things. Number one, which doors are propped open or are jar. Number two, those main cameras, you actually have, Dave and I talk about this all the time, many of our cameras are reactive in that sense. And so we want to be able to monitor some of those pieces front forward. And the third piece is it's telling us who's coming and going. So if I were to badge into door 13 at Badger Middle School across the street, that may pop up on there. So that is a recommendation that could come forth, that we could develop those and put those in each of our offices going forward. There is an ongoing cost to that, too, Nancy, with the computers, the TVs, and then the software licensing that goes with that. The third thing that we talked about and we heard a lot from that group that evening is training for our staff. I think Jen and Lenny had costed out a dollar amount for an entire day of staff training for everybody in the district. We could look at training avenues and bringing people in, from people who manage our front doors and our intercom systems to a variety of other training opportunities. So that is the third piece that we brought forth for the board. I'm going to let Dave talk about the fourth one, because it's really facilities related.
Right now, I'm actually feeling pretty good about the exterior of our facilities, especially with the new doors that we've got coming in this summer. Especially, the high school, I think, is actually quite good. We're getting people trained.
Can I just interrupt you there?
Certainly.
So the exterior of our facilities are definitely not secure, though. I mean, I've had, I've heard multiple reports of students letting other students in during hours. That's not secure. That's not...
That's, that's the point I was just getting to ma, to make, John, is that we're moving forward. The buildings themselves physically, they're in pretty good shape. We have some behavior problems that we need to work on with doors. We still have a few that are being propped open. It's better than it was, but now that we have the system in place, we know exactly when to go chase that down. My bigger area of concern is actually inside the building right now, because we have a lot of activities going on. And basically, it's hard to police the inside of the building because we have no way to separate the building. It's a difficult building to do, because there are so many corridors, so many different ways around it. But I would really like to look at segmenting that building for security reasons, so that in the event of something going on in the fieldhouse. Right now, it's easy for somebody to get through up, through a stairwell and into the entire building. They can wander around, do whatever. And there's several other areas like that. But I would, that would be one area that I think would be really valuable to pursue.
So back 100 years when I was a kid, we had these lovely metal gates that would shut off parts of our school. Is that what we're talking about, or is there some better way that we're looking at that?
Yeah, there, there's this thing called a dead-end corridor. Basically, in a building, you need to have two ways out of any place that you're in in the building. You can't do that with a gate that's padlocked to the wall on, on either side. But you can control the flow of traffic and which way the exits are. So you could actually have a, a wood door with a panic device on one side that allows people out. But again, restricting that flow into the building, but still maintaining two separate ways out. It, it's a difficult task to achieve, but it can be done.
Okay, well, I guess we'd have to...
I guess we'd have to see what something like that would look like, perhaps, to look at for the future. I mean, if there's a video or photos or something that we could see, because I'm like struggling to understand, especially at the high school with so many doors, and, and how, and if you have multiple activities going on. So you've got something going on in the pool, you've got something going on in the fieldhouse, something going on in the south gym. And let's just say there's a, I don't know, basketball meeting going on in the cafeteria. I, I don't even understand how that would work.
That's the day you throw your hands at them.
Yeah, I mean, but that's almost every night. I mean, you know, realistically, depending upon the season, that could be every single night.
But the one thing that does happen at night is the later that it gets, the, the activities die down, so that there's fewer and fewer people there. We still have people in those smaller confined areas that will wander off. Our staff finds them all the time.
Half of them are just lost, I think, Dave, honestly. They just don't know where they're going up at the high school.
I thought the signage worked pretty well, but...
One of those lost people.
Okay.
So again, as you kind of think about, you know, what we heard from those safety professionals, talking about kind of next steps here, that whole sense of not over-obligating the future, it's really for the board to discuss. And then if you have additional thoughts or ideas, we are happy to explore. Those were from kind of our expertise in working with law enforcement, looking at what we have, the money's available. And again, that's just another avenue of funds. It's not like that's our only avenue of funds for this, as Dave was saying. But really, for the board to discuss and determine, you know, is, is there a direction you'd like us to pursue?
I'll just, I'll just ask, so are some, are any of these options that we're looking at or that you guys are discussing right now, are any of them currently on the plan for future work anyways?
So I can speak to the camera piece, John. As we go through and we evaluate our cameras, we use our police liaison officers here, our PD, our internal staff, our administrators and so forth, we will need to expand some of those pieces. We've had incidents where we've wished we've had the camera in play. So as we build that piece, that is something that we would have to do.
Yeah.
It's that stair room, this is that, this would be in essence the kickstart to do that, no different than...
Right.
The door alerting thing that we're doing right now. We would have eventually added that over time.
And that's what I'm getting at.
This would kickstart that project much faster with the money that says we're doing this now.
Yeah.
Similar to Dave's project, he could add four doors in at the high school, or three doors, or would this kickstart and take care of the entire high school to, to start to segment that building and create those security pieces or slow down an intruder, those types of pieces.
Yeah. And that's kind of what I was getting at, is, is we're planning for those. So those are kind of things that are, you know, in the future budget, budgets anyways. We're just giving them a kickstart and getting them sooner, you know, rather than later, which I'm not opposed to, using the money for to kind of boost some of those. I do like the, the security center, you know, just from the aspect that we were talking about before, kids propping up open doors and, and allowing other kids in, just to be able to have somebody monitor that and be able to address that as fast as possible, you know? But would that require another person to monitor that? Or would we, would we use people that are already in the office to do that?
We would, we would use office staff. As you go higher up in grade levels, obviously, there's more office staff in our high school. When you're down to the elementary level, it's a little less.
Do they have the time to do it?
We would have to go back and do that. I think it's something that's there and it's visible. Many of our schools have certain cameras up already because of our intercom system. So if you go to all of our schools, that is already up, because I have to buzz you in as a community member at that point in time. We're going to make it much more visible and seen, so that it's not on the small laptop. If I'm working in there and the school nurse and the administrator, whoever's walking past, it's visible up on that screen where I can see some of those things, and we can use it after hours or before hours if we had an event or something like that.
But, but, so you're relating it to somebody buzzing somebody in, but right now, somebody buzzes somebody in, you know, not every single second of the day. I mean, there's kids possibly going through those cameras, and someone has to actually watch that to know...
It is not what you may see in private industry, or my job is to sit to look at these eight computer screens and manage a camera system. We have not, we are not proposing that at this point in time.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, and, but you're right in that there's a reactionary piece, right? You're, by the time, like our current system, you're buzzing in, you know, I think Dave and Tim, when they're talking about it, what gets us to be proactive or by time, which is, you know, the recommendation, as you said, buzzing is too late. This puts predominantly more cameras in more places in, in proactive monitoring. So if it's part of, you know, your natural work to glance, look, or that door alert, those pieces, it's just a little more center-facing and, and hoping to get to a proactive part.
Yeah, I liked, I guess I liked more of the, the alerts that it would possibly send when a door is left open or something like that, that somebody can address. But yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm all for, you know, using it to, for the progressive or for the, the future, you know, bringing the future stuff a little earlier than we would normally do. So I think that'd be a good show for us.
I think the solutions that you've provided are all worthy of additional investigation and consideration. I appreciate all of those. The point that I'd like to make is there are certain things that you've proposed that are more kind of controls that detect issues, like cameras, right? A camera won't stop someone from going through a door, but it'll sure help the investigation or it'll sure help alert someone sooner. You know, a good solid locked door might prevent someone from actually getting in in the first place, and you're, you're attacking that. That's what I'd like to see is, is we go forward, that we consider a mixture, right? Because we need both. We shouldn't put all on one, all on the other. We shouldn't put all on one, all on the other. I am intrigued by that fourth idea that you brought up, the, I can't remember what you called it. I'm kind of calling it the divide and secure option, because that sounds very much like prevention to me. And, but I agree with John, the, the security center dashboard, we have something like that at our, at our operation. It's very effective. So I don't think there's a bad idea here. I would simply encourage that we need to approach this with a mixture. And so if you think administration that there is, we're lacking in one or the other and we need to catch up, what would it take to have that right blend or that right mixture? I'd be interested in hearing that.
And I think with what Dave's proposed, we can do some of those exterior alerting pieces on those interior doors or vice versa. When we are in an event, if a panic button gets hit or whatever, those doors can automatically close and lock for us. So we would look to integrate some of those control rooms, right? At the same time as, if Dave were to go forward this project and put those doors in at that point.
Other feedback, this is a discussion item, obviously it'll come back, but, and I think you also mentioned earlier that if in between meetings, any school board members have any questions or thoughts, Superintendent Wimmer, they should reach out to you?
Yeah, please reach out. As you think about, contemplate, you know, we certainly engage across systems, not just with law enforcement, but other schools, districts, et cetera, to gain knowledge and ideas. So we'll continue that exploration with our peers too. But just let us know, but we can certainly, like I said, take a dive deeper into what we're looking at today for you.
Great. All right. If there's nothing else on that item, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Future agenda items, the first is our board meeting calendar. And so there are a number of upcoming meetings, all of which are scheduled to take place in the Education Service Center. January 31, Policy Committee, 4:00 p.m. February 6 is a regular board meeting at 5:30 p.m. February 20, regular board meeting, 5:30 p.m. And February 21, Curriculum Committee meeting at 8:30 a.m. And encourage the public also to watch for the official postings as the times or dates or locations may change, but that's what we have currently on the calendar. Any questions on the board calendar? All right. Next, we have items for follow-up and communication. Are there any items for follow-up and communication?
I'd reached, yeah, I had reached out to Jen and Principal Dave Ullman regarding an incident that I was alerted to around a history lesson that was being taught in, in Badger. And kind of goes directly against some of the, the previous discussion that we had regarding current events and the timelines that we had. Something that happened recently within the last two years is now being taught or, I don't know, kind of misled to the students, it seems to me, around some kind of questionable information. So I just, I don't know if we need to follow up with that. I haven't heard back from Dave, which I was kind of disappointed in, and wanted to kind of just figure out where, what was going on with that, where it came from, you know, who approved it, and...
I actually asked Dr. Reese to step in and make that more significant connection to the curriculum, the where and those pieces. So I'll talk with them around connecting with you personally, but then I would assume it, it might come back to Melanie with the curriculum committee.
Because we had dates set, correct? As far as current events?
Yes and no. There's some pieces from the, the tax, yes, and that could, that could have been part of that combingling and confusion there. So I know that she was assisting with that kind of investigation piece.
Because, I mean, I don't know if you see my point, but, you know, some of the items that were brought up are literally last week were looked at for being basically, you know, expunged from the record under false information. So now we're teaching our kids this under, under these false pretenses of, of what circumstances actually happened when they're now possibly by our Senate going to be removed. So it's...
No, I fully understand your concern, and I'll just make sure that Dr. Reese then does that follow-up and then does the follow-up with Melanie for her committee as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Other items for follow-up and communication. All right. Hearing none, we have an item to discuss in executive session. So I would move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.851C to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and to take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely compensation. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Thank you, Joel. Motion and second to enter into executive session. As this is a motion to enter into executive session, I will call the roll.